Oh, perfect.
Well.
We shall have our system. Here we go. The latest is. You know. One place saying that.
They have a lot of people down. But when I'm on, so you guys.
It's me in one minute sixty.
Well. Good evening. My name is Henry Osterhoff and I'm a councillor here and I'd like to call this meeting of the committee of the whole to order and in attendance tonight we have Mayor Burrow, councillor Downey, Brayton Smith and councillor Renault on virtual and councillor Edie, welcome. And of course we have an abundant amount of staff at the other end of the table and guests in the gallery. So welcome to everybody. And we'll work together to get this meeting covered and we have some interesting topics tonight. And at first I'd like to, a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Smith. Mayor Burrow, thank you. All in favor? Harry, thank you. Is there any disclosure of urinary interest? None that I can see? Thank you. And, and we have started our meeting with some delegations tonight at number four, four point one, Electric Energy Solutions. So we will welcome to the podium Dave Anders and Alex Petten Ross.
Just a point of work.
Yes.
Did I miss you calling for declarations of interest?
No, I did.
Well, you did. Okay. I don't have it. I just want to make sure we got it covered. All right. Sorry about that.
Yep. I have some notes I'm following here and I didn't announce at first, but ten minutes are allotted for the presentation and if you go overboard, I have the ability to fill you now. I'm sure we'll work this out together.
Um, thank you, Your Worship Member Burrow and there was a councillor having this. I'm David Anders from Electric Energy Solutions. Joining my colleague, Simal Balanji from Kruger Energy, not Alex for the notes. We're here to speak to you about a project we'd like to propose at Brockville Airport, uh, which is a solar project. So we'll talk a little bit of who we are, Kruger and Electra, the context for this project, the meaning of the materials energy needs and what the ISO is long term to permit is, which, which this is proposed to be a derivative. And we'll talk about the proposed projects, some of the frequently asked questions, concerns and steps. Um, so Electra, uh, Electric Energy Solutions and Electric Utilities are two sister companies on the overall umbrella of electric. It's a municipal owned company owned by seven municipalities that formed out of a number of municipally owned distribution, so back in seventy years ago. So the Philly side serves a number of communities in surrounding Toronto area as well as, uh, my communities, very contingent in St. Catherine, sort of a million customers in Ontario. And the energy solutions business is started to pursue some of the more competitive aspects of, of the energy space. Uh, they're not covered in, in the utilities because part of that is uh, we develop, own and operate energy projects, including solar, you know, behind meter generation, battery storage and currently in portfolio. Hundred different distribution, uh, energy sites in Ontario, mostly solar as well as some behind meter natural gas and energy storage. Um, I'll introduce Kruger as well. Uh, so Kruger Energy, um, started about twenty years ago, uh, as, as an offshoot of Kruger. Which is over a hundred year old company. He started the pulp paper business, a family owned company. And, um, about forty seven different energy assets, uh, installed capacity of six hundred and fifty megawatts. We've got just a next slide there. This gives an overview of so Kruger assets, a lot of wind power as well as some solar biomass cogeneration, energy storage in Ontario, Quebec as well as, uh, in the new grass and these codes. And I think, you know, we're doing it, Kruger and Electra came together and we've, uh, uh, similar philosophy when it comes to developing projects, uh, an owner mentality. We both want to own, retain and manage the assets over the life of project, we don't, uh, to develop and flip assets. And we both have very strong into sustainability and the communities in which we, we operate. All right. So a little context, um. In the last, I'd say five or six years, we've gone from, uh, a view of the energy landscape where we had some adequate power meet our needs to having the ISO of the independent water system operator forecast, uh, growing demand for, for energy and capacity as well as, um, the retirement, a lot of contracted capacity. Uh, this led to a shortfall, guys, who's now looking to press through a number of servants that are, uh, being pursued on from an annual basis. Um, and currently this long term to procurement is addressing shortfalls and energy forecast of twenty thirty. Um, in previous rounds of this procurement and Electric Energy Solutions was awarded three, um, battery storage projects and the way around it was focused more on capacity. And what we're here to talk about is more on the energy side. Um, so again, this is the, the long term to LT two procurement. As mentioned, it's going to be conducted as an annual procurement over the next four years. Um, I've talked a little bit of energy and capacity, it won't belabor it, but, um, it's split into sort of two streams and one is for energy assets, which are focused on providing low cost, uh, energy generation. And the capacity side, which is really more about assets that can dispatch power very quickly for short periods of time, this energy storage. Natural gas, peaker plants are doing a lot of that right now in Ontario, um, but we're looking for feeder alternatives. And they're looking to procure, uh, or fourteen thousand eight watt hours of new energy in this, in this front of this LT two. So these are for twenty year contracts with the ISO to, um, to bid them that, that energy in the capacity into the internal markets. This procurement will award these projects based on the lowest cost per megawatt hour generate with some additional, uh, points based adders for things like indigenous equity participation, uh, areas located in northern regions and non-primate agricultural areas. So the proposed project that we'd like to bring forward you about tonight is five megawatt solar project located, uh, on land owned by the, uh, Brockville Airport. Um, the overall footprint would be roughly thirty acres of land. The overall final size, depending on the ISO's final award and final configuration. Um, but right now we, uh, signed an option agreement with the airport uh, to lease lands and, um, in construction project. We'd be interacting on the distribution line, um, about longer way, uh, on the distribution line connected to Brockville, yes. And, um, we believe the project, the five megawatts can be accommodated there, taken into account all required setbacks, environmental, the considerations that they're on preliminary layout, which I will know this is just conceptual, very preliminary, uh, still a lot to do in terms of the final design and diligence on the site. Um, we've also engaged, uh, Canada to make sure that there's no, uh, new airport operations that are going to be impacted by the project. Uh, just a bit of an overview of some of the permitting process and really this is all of the, the process and the steps that we would envision going into, um, after submission of the project to the, to the RFP and after award, that's really when the, um, development proper would, would, uh, begin. Uh, beginning with, uh, aspects of the electrical interconnection review from the ISO and hydro one on the deliverability and the connection impact assessment of the project, as well as registration with the OEB and with the ISOs in Markus. Uh, the additional municipal approvals, of course, um, uh, in terms of, um, planning, um, zoning inside plan approval, uh, building permits if required. Um, and, uh, realize this might also involve additional consultation, we're happy to undertake at that time. Uh, in addition, there is a layer provincial approvals relevant to solar, um, through the issue environment, most station parks. Uh, this includes reviews of natural heritage, wildlife, cultural assessments, um, noise studies uh, to ensure that the impact is within the regulations set by the, uh, municipal government. And finally, of course, uh, we've had to get further into designing construction, um, aspects of electrical safety, which, uh, we've seen like ESA. Both, we talk to communities often, you know, some of the, um, the things we're looking to really add additional value where we even think that provide community benefits, uh, this, this project we are, um, engaging right now, they're going with Ontario to, um, ask for their participation in this project as an equity partner of up to fifty percent. Um, so it's important to us to have that, uh, part of our digital strategy as well as supporting the objectives of the ISO province and, and having that indigenous participation in these problem, uh, projects. Um, we also want to recognize, you know, the interest that community can offer at two thousand dollars per megawatts per year uh, community benefits payment directly to municipality. The city of Brockville is going to be doing the lands with, with also receiving police payments. Um, but, you know, forms, I would give you the taxation revenues as well as this municipal, um, benefit. Um, other benefits we can talk about, um, wherever possible, we generally look to hire local resources for um, construction of the project, which is really the most sort of labor intensive portion, ongoing operations and maybe this is usually pretty limited, but we'd look to local resources for that as well. Um, and as I mentioned, there would be avenues for additional community engagement and public consultation as part of those, uh, just approved this project, uh, process down the road. So a couple of frequently asked questions or concerns, typically get with solar projects. Um, we want question we're often fatal this, why, why this site? Why is, where, you know, posing here? So a few of the criteria and reasons why not this site ideally situated, um, is really the, uh, the interconnection capacity. So for this this pyramid, um, you know, we're, we're limited to, to locating projects where the grid can support it. Um, so that brings opportunities for both large projects and small projects. There's a distribution project of five megawatts. Um, you know, this is well suited to, to connect that in the mission level. Uh, as per the ISO's rules, um, these products cannot be proposed on primary cultural areas. That was another check that we'll give. And generally, you know, constructability of the site, um, minimization of visual impacts, those are things we need to take in now and um, you know, being located near the airport, um, the lands being level and clear and, and, and flat and not really uh, slated for a lot of intensive development and made it an ideal choice for us. Other considerations, um, you know, when we get asked the question of, uh, how we minimize some of the impacts such as visual impacts and something we would look to work with this I'll be on in terms of planning some vegetative borders or screening. Um, and as well, uh, you know, the noise levels from equipment would be assessed as part of our noise study and whether to take it in the surveying process. Um, so a bit of the process and the next steps going forward. The RFP was formally released in June, uh, this year and, uh, right now we're, we're under taking this process of community engagement and due diligence on the site as well, leading up to our submission deadline of the RFP in October this year. We anticipate awards, uh, somewhere around Q two of twenty twenty six and that's when we begin, uh, formally going out for those approvals and that permitting process. Uh, construction beginning somewhere in twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, uh, targeting commercial operations by twenty twenty nine. So it, it has been a three to five year process depending on the permitting timelines. Um, and at this point, in order to submit our falls into the ISO, uh, we're requesting municipal support resolution, uh, from council. This is not, uh, an approval of the project and, and not a substitute for all the permitting process that we still have to undertake. It's really just, um, a support and principle for us proposing this project to the ISO and going through their evaluation process. But that's it for my presentation. So thank you very much. You have been answering questions.
Okay. Thank you for that, uh, enlightening presentation. Uh, is there any council member that has questions at this point?
Mayor Burrow. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you. Thanks for the, the presentation. Of course, this will be familiar to us because many of us were at the recent public meeting as well. Um, but, um, it's nice to be able to sleep on, uh, on this information because some things occurred to me by tonight that didn't occur to me in the moment. If we go back, uh, if we can go back to the slide that has the graph on the projected electricity uh, usage and demand and so on. I was really surprised, non hydro renewables. I'm assuming that the, uh, solar farms would fall into that. And as I take a look at the, the projected makeup of our electricity system, that they basically disappear as a twenty thirty five, twenty thirty six. So I don't know if you have the answer for that, but it just struck me as odd as this is a twenty year project and they're bringing more of these things online. I would have expected to see that at least maintain the ones that are falling off because they're too old or, or even increasing. So, so I'll, I'll let you have an opportunity to answer that if you have the answer and then I have one or two other things.
Sure. Thank, thank you, Mayor Burrow. Um, yeah, I think this, this was a chart published by the ISO as part of their, um, annual planning outlook. I think really what this is just showing is existing contracted resources that are projecting a future. So what they're showing here is that resources, um, so it's hard to see on this graph. I think the non hydro renewables is sort of a light blue here.
Yeah.
That would represent a lot of the feed and tariff, uh, projects that would be coming to the end of the contracts. Um, so not that they wouldn't necessarily be part of the generation. Some of them may just become our dispense. Um, but others that are maybe twenty, thirty years old, those projects that we need to be refurbished and or re-contract. Consider the number of other RFPs that are dealing with existing assets and re-contracting them. But this one specifically is looking for new projects or additional contracts. So it's really the, the goal of this is to, to show the gap between the top line, which is projected demand and what the ISOs, if they did nothing, would have in terms of contracted capacity. So the, the goal of this term is to fill that, fill that.
Okay. And if I may, Mr. Chair.
So you do.
Uh, and, and again, you may not have the answer for this. So this is as much for staff to, to maybe, uh, take note. Um, and, and maybe feedback through the airport commission and to the city. You mentioned in your presentation about, uh, the additional taxation revenue and that being separate from the community benefit fund and, and I understand the separation. Um, but because that piece of land is a municipal to municipal relationship, I, I think we are looking at paintings and Lou instead of direct taxation. And, and this may seem all too familiar to some sitting around the, uh, the, the horseshoe here, uh, but with not everybody. Um, the relationship between the city and the township was not always great because of an issue around an increase of property value through a renovation or, or an upgrade. Uh, and so I just hope the negotiations that you've had with the city for your lease arrangements. So I hope the city has taken into account the impact that that will have on the payment and loop and they folded that into the negotiations. If, if not, that needs to be a conversation that's very open and honest and takes place rather quickly before we all start to, to cement in the relationship because dealing with that after the fact is, is going to set the relationship off the rails again and we might as well learn from the past and, and do it right. So I don't know if you already had the answer. If not, I see staff have been scribbling and we just need to make sure that, that we all understand the factors before we find ourselves in another unpleasant situation.
Good question.
Uh, not a question, but a comment. I'm not exactly sure what kind of assessment increase this older farm has on. So perhaps the impact won't be as dramatic as we may believe it to be, but we can certainly investigate and even pose the question to impact to see what kind of dollars that might increase to EIL for the city to pay us.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, councillor Brayton.
Thank you. Oh. Thank you, Chair. Uh, your company, no. You contract that. You don't, don't list firm yourselves.
Uh, through your role, uh, that's correct. Yeah, we usually contract with, um, any number of, uh, EC uh, companies to do the actual unit construction.
Yeah, well. Be careful who you get to do it because, uh, we were promised over there for this one, lots of things that every time you went to, uh, ask him, where's Mr. So-and-so, Mr. So-and-so was fired or Mr. So-and-so quit or Mr. So-and-so send another, another, uh, uh, site and, uh, it was a kind of a like a down case, this tail is not no catching up. So like, uh, I, I don't want to go through that again. I, I'm, I'm not going, we love that this one, but, uh, I don't want anybody else to do it either.
Okay. Any further questions? Then I'd like to thank you for your presence tonight and we'll move on to the second presentation. Uh, we have a guy, David, a guest vice chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for your presentation.
There's time. Good afternoon, Mayor Burrow, councillors, CAO Watten, Deputy Clerk Sandel, Sandel and my fellow mission members. I see my phone, Bob Kennedy in the gallery. My wife was sitting beside me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this important matter. I'm here not just as a representative of the Brockville Thousand Islands, Tackeberry Regional Airport. I'm here as a voice for a community asset that steadily twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year serves us all from Leeds and the Thousand Islands to Front of Young, to Elizabeth Town, Kitlee, Rockville, Augusta, Prescott and beyond. An asset that makes an oversized contribution to our collective wellbeing. And I'm here to explain how the solar farm lays the groundwork for a more resilient and positive future for this essential asset. And the important public services we obtain from it. Sadly, many Ontario, small municipally owned airports in Ontario are shuttering. Cornwall being the latest example. And please take note of this, a closed airport is an irreplaceable airport. With your support of the solar installation, we have an opportunity to do something different. To file a bold flight plan that will ensure the long-term survival of our airport. And to prepare our airport to fly with its own wings and lead us into the new phase of electric aviation currently underway in many parts of the world. The proposed solar installation is a catalyst, not just for clean energy generation that's desperately needed in eastern Ontario, as they pointed out. But a catalyst for the long-term sustainability of an invaluable piece of public infrastructure in our region. The solar farm will unlock a projected revenue stream, which combined with fuel sales and eventually electric charging revenues will bring the airport to operational self-deficiency. The decision before you, Mayor, Mayor and councillors is whether to support the solar ins- the, the decision we for you, whether to support the solar installation on airport lands is about more than much needed renewable energy in Ontario. It's about vision. It's about resilience. And it's about shared responsibility for the wellbeing of all the communities that make up this great region we call home. I want to take a minute to walk you through how the airports reach and impact extend beyond the borders of any single community and potentially can affect any resident of the region. And the airport supports medevac flights to and from Brockville General Hospital. It supports one of the most successful organ retrieval programs in the province, essential for many life-saving procedures. It supports Coast Guard search and rescue missions and other operations. It supports law enforcement, operations by the OPP, RCMP, Canada Border Services and others. It supports critical pipeline surveillance, environmental monitoring and aerial surveying. It supports flight training for local cadets and for many flight schools in Ontario and Quebec that use the airport as a waypoint and fueling station, providing essential training to future pilots. It supports business users drawn to our re- to our region, thanks to its airport, a critical asset for companies that rely on air travel and logistics. These businesses don't just show, set up shop. They bring with them stable, well-paying jobs that strengthen our local economy. Leclerc, now operating out of the former Procter and Gamble facility in Brockville, is a standout example. And soon, large air tankers for wildfire suppression. We've got the runway length. We've got the water. And after this summer, we know the fires are coming. And the benefits don't stop at the airport fence. The solar farm will bring with it a two point seven million dollar three-phase tower line down airport road. A critical electricity upgrade that will allow the airport to participate in the electrification of aviation. We will get this upgrade for just the cost of connecting where it passes by the airport entrance. This will enable us to take a quantum leap into the exciting future of aviation and improve the environment in so doing. A future that includes electric aircraft and advanced air mobility such as Uber aircraft available to use when need. This is happening now at airports throughout the world. In fact, I just read on the, the weekend that Michigan and Ontario border state, as you know, has just announced the linkage of four of its airports with electric aircraft charging stations made in Burlington, Vermont. Our future too will include electric aircraft charging stations. They will be in high demand, given our geographic uh, position as a midpoint to Montreal, Toronto, Ottawa and upstate New York. We will have public EV chargers for motor vehicles. Three-phase electricity will also bring enhanced emergency response capability. And aviation manufacturing and/or development on the airport lands, drones being a favorite algorithm. This is forward thinking. This is smart fun. We, we understand that the airport commission that there's been resistance. In fact, the airport manager has met with many of the residents of airport road to hear their concerns and answer their questions. Most of these questions and concerns were discussed at Thursday's community engagement meeting, so I won't dwell on the issue. But I would say this to any residents of airport road that are still not convinced. You will see across the street, many things you will like. You'll see enhanced manicured and attended planting along the fence. You'll have access to vehicle charging stations. You'll see firsthand, but not ear, the wonders of electrified aviation. And you'll be in walking distance of various other resources that come, including a beautiful new terminal building and many public amenities. Airport road will be beautified and believe me, as the airport increasingly becomes a hub for local activity, including your own activities, your property values will go up. In addition to the solar installation, but closely linked to its approval, a new terminal building. A new terminal building will follow. In fact, design activities are already underway. This new terminal building. Will better support critical services, welcome pilots, crews and the public finally. Into suitable accommodation accessible to all. And it will serve as a multi-purpose space, a place to permanent permanently host some important activities. Here in Elizabeth Town, Kitley, soon to be determined, sitting right there in the, at the airport in the heart of the region. But I want you to realize that the approval or non-approval of the solar farm on airport lands. Will have a direct impact on the scope of the new terminal building project. I have stressed the importance of the airport for the well-being of all communities in the region and the individuals. Who live there. In the coming months, my colleagues and I at the Airport Commission will be inviting neighboring munis- municipalities. To join Brockville and Elizabeth Town, Kitley as long-term partners in funding airport operations and capital projects. You may be wondering why now. Well, because this is a shared resource and it deserves shared investment. As we look ahead, I want to reaffirm what drives the Airport Commission. A steadfast commitment to the long-term well-being of our region. We're not just volunteer advisors. We're visionaries and stewards of a shared future and passionate ad- advocates. For aviation's evolving role in the success of our unions. We're not here for a fleeting idea. We're here with a plan, a plan built with care. Tested with rigor and guided by the values of stewardship, innovation and economic resilience. This isn't just about infrastructure, it's about leader- leadership, it's about legacy. Esteemed Mayor Burrow and councilors. With your support today, we're not just flipping a switch on clean energy. You're powering up a new chapter in sustainable aviation and community development. Backing the solar farm is more than the responsible choice, it's the visionary choice. The runway is clear, the future is calling, let's take off. Thank you for your time, thank you for your trust and thank you for your decades of support for the airport.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, are there any council members that would like to have a question at this time? Councilor Downing.
How does the Commission intend to get revenues from the uh solar for?
We have, we have a um. An option agreement with the developers that pays a small amount. And then if they are awarded a contract by the I S O. Uh, we have a lease that's been negotiated and it's then it's ready to go whereby they will make lease payments to us. For thirty-five years, for twenty, the twenty years of their contract. And fifteen other years. And the reason why we added those fifteen other years is that there's really. An enhancement of revenues that rises exponentially with that. Add-on and it happens to correspond to the effort, to the useful life of the solar panels themselves. Um, there was a question earlier about the the tax situation, um, Mayor Burrow. And I don't want to anticipate your question, but I can answer the question that you asked to Dave Anders. The um, the lease does uh deal with payments. Anticipates that there will be payments in lieu of taxes and they'll be able either payable through Brockville. Or or directly to Elizabeth Town, Kitley. And uh, but the amount will be determined by Elizabeth Town, Kitley. And that's the amount that the solar developer will pay over and above the lease payments to the town, to to the airport.
Council Brayton. Thank you. Does Brock know about this, Neil?
Brockville knows all about it. It took hundreds of hours of negotiation to come to where we are today. Uh, Brockville approved it. Let me back up a little. We at the, at the Airport Commission. Uh, wanted to get three-phase power, talked to Hydro, the cost was two-point-seven million dollars to run the line from from Tincap to the airport. That was not feasible. Uh, we put out the word that that we wanted a solar farm. We knew it was innovative. And um, but we knew it was noble. We knew now Canada had cleared these on airports. So eventually Electra came knocking at our, our door. At that point, Brockville. Uh, passed the resolution allowing us to go forward and negotiate documents. Which we did over a period of months and hundreds of hours and lots of discussions and um. And once they were, the documents were finished about a month ago. I guess in, in July, they were signed by um, by Sandy McDonald, the uh, the the C A O of Brockville. City manager, I should say. And uh, and we, and the signing of the option to lease has allowed the developer to proceed and be. And all of us to be here today.
Okay, and a follow-up.
Go ahead.
Now there's a hydro of A D N for. Building up a new line from Tincap to the. Airport road.
I'll leave. I'll leave that because David, Dave's closer to the bat, they're dealing with the, we're not dealing with hydro.
You're pretty much saying that if you don't get hydro, a new hydro line down there, you're not going to have. This project going through.
This project is dependent on having a hydro line.
Yeah.
Go through.
But do they know about this?
Absolutely, absolutely. The people I I dealt with that Electra had negotiated and they came back with the same number that we had. That was two-point-six, two-point-seven million for that line from Tincap. Where there is the three-phase transformer um to uh the airport. Well, it goes beyond the airport, we picked it up at the airport.
That's like, we have deals going through pending on. Certain things too, that if we don't get that, this is not, not a done deal. So like, I just wondered. How are you doing? Thank you.
Yeah, thank brother. Then I'd like to thank you for the presentation, a very warm.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Uh, Officer Chair, just want to uh let council know about what steps going forward are for our particular was of town, Kitley. Um, so we've had a public meeting uh last week, we've had the presentation here in front of council. Um, we'll be bringing uh to uh council on the fifteenth uh staff report. Which will include the municipal support resolution that uh Electra are looking for. Um, and it will be at that point that uh council will uh be prepared to allow to uh make a decision if they.
Okay. Thank you for that, but that'll be next week. So we're going to continue with our meeting and our guests are welcome to leave if they so desire, but it's a thrilling session, you could say.
Excuse me, just to be clear, the um, the municipal support resolution therefore will not be. Uh, considerable tonight, will be considered next month and a week from now, that's.
Yes, okay, yes.
Thank you very much. Sorry, just another important clarification, so the 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 city of Brockville will also be providing a special support resolution. But they're waiting for hours to be done first before they go and and send anything. So, uh, we have to go first and then the city of Brockville will.
Okay. Then we will start with our, continue the meeting with the staff reports, like we're five. Corporate services and five-point-one cemeteries updates. I have a motion here, I'll read the motion, then I'll be looking for a mover or a seconder. Motion is that report A two-five dash four-three cemetery update be received. And that the committee recommend to council to direct staff to install remaining warning signs on maintained cemeteries. And that the committee recommend to council to direct staff to in- investigate costs for the required work identified in attachment four. To present these costs to council for consideration in the twenty-twenty-six budget. And that the committee recommend to council to direct staff to prepare terms of reference for cemetery committee for council's consideration. Is there a mover and a seconder for this? Council Renault, a move. Council Smith, seconding. The uh, it's on the table for discussion at this point. Staff have anything to add this uh state?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Uh, staff just wants to acknowledge that the report provides a great deal of information and to restate that. Staff basically is requesting direction uh to investigate costs for identified uh work that is required. Uh, for budget to bring back to council for budget consideration and to proceed with the completing. Um, township requirements for operating and retaining cemeteries in Ontario as I'm in legislation and monitored by the V A O. We're also available to answer questions.
Okay. It's uh, there's a lot in this, a lot of information in this report and uh. Thank you for putting it all together. Um, let's begin the discussion. Mayor Burrow.
Guess I'll, I'll go ahead and get things started. So first of all, uh, thanks to staff for all the work you've done to this site, uh, with. It's no small feat, uh, to have brought everything together in in one spot like this. Uh, even though there are gaps and and that's no fault of of staffs. Um, but this, this has been a problem, waiting for a solution for a long, long time. Uh, certainly longer than I've been sitting, you know, at the, at these, uh, at these seats. Uh, I'll, I like the recommendation that staff has put forward. I think the idea of uh, of having a cemetery committee. Uh, unlocks a lot of potential to solve some other problems, which uh you yourself, Mr. Chair, uh, brought forward, you know, with your experience. Saying on on one of the boards. Um. So, so there isn't much that I don't like, but about the direction that this report has ultimately taken. Uh, not to minimize staff, staff's efforts, but but once you have it all in front of you like this and you see this picture. The, the solution is almost self-evident, so the recommendation here just seems to make a lot of sense to me. So I'm, I'm very supportive of what we have in front of us.
Any other counselors like to comment? Mr. Downing. You go ahead.
Uh, I was in touch over the weekend with um. The Heritage Committee and um. They're in support of uh. A committee being formed, which is option two. And so am I, I think that uh. It could lead us into paths that uh. Well, basically, get some more new blood involved in in that aspect of of what's going on in township. If that could happen, I think that'd be a great thing. So I would be in support of option number two.
Very good. Any other comments? Questions? So do we look at one of the options there and and pick one as a group? Because, and that's included in the report.
Uh, the recommendation is the two, which is in the motion.
Okay. Okay. And then what about the the cemetery bylaw, the very bottom? You have a bit of a question then?
Uh, council can provide direction to staff to bring it.
Next week.
To council.
And through you, Chair. Um, some of the recommendations that have been put forward by council would require us to update our cemetery bylaw anyway. Um, so um, if you choose to go down uh the recommendations and uh here in front of you. Um, we will need to bring the cemetery bylaw back and get this in.
Then, Council, ready?
I'd like to move for option two.
Okay. All, everybody support that, that will, that will be included in the motion?
That is your recommendation.
That's the recommendation, so. There is support for that. So then I will be calling the vote on on the motion. All in favor? Carrie, thank you for that. We will now move to five-point-two. A dash twenty-five dash fifty stop-up and close request. Does staff have any comments? Other than.
You need to read the motion, please, sir.
Pardon me?
Please read the motion and get a mover and a seconder to get it on the table.
Yes, I should do that. Yes, thank you. Uh, the motion is that uh, the report number A twenty-five dash fifty stop-up and close request be received. And that the committee provide direction to council on the options presented. And that the request be deemed administrative in nature. Is there a mover and a seconder for this? Council Downing moving, Council Brayton seconding. Now we got that on. Now, is there anything additional?
Uh, thank you, Chair. As presented in this report, uh, it came forward. Uh, when the applicants were processing their severance application, the severance is currently uh active, but not dependent on this request. Staff circulated uh notice of the application as per the township policy internally and externally. Externally, no concerns or objections were received. Uh, the application is supported by the planning department. Um, in addition, the clerk's department has deemed this request as administrative in nature. Uh, and we'd like to note that council, not necessarily the one that's sitting here, but council has previously approved similar requests. On the same roadway and in the same area. Uh, it is believed uh through planning note that there's been at least two or three approvals. Uh, internally, Public Works uh is not supportive on the request and the report does include the comments were received. And the Public Works Manager is present to respond to any questions.
Okay. So we're at that point um with the Public Works Department, the. Royal, Mr. Metcalf, we'd like to speak as to uh what brought up your conclusion.
I think Councilself, if you have any specific question regarding the comments, I can speak to that.
Pardon me, um, I was in a tractor all day and.
So I, I, if you can ask a specific question about the comments, I can answer that, but I think they're fairly self-explanatory. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Are there any? Questions from any really around the table, Council Downing?
Well, it seems as though this was approved through the, the planning committee. From what I can understand, I'm, I'm a little. Uh, foggy on, on what, how, what the timeline was for all this. Stop up and, because there was letters in there from twenty-twenty-three.
Sir, uh, through you, Chair, to council, remember, uh, Councilor Downing? Uh, there is a report that was included, it was from one of the previous applications that was previously approved. So I'm sorry for the confusion, I was just to give it an example of what previously was. Um, it's my understanding, unfortunately, planning is not here to correct me, um. That part of the conditions of this severance was to ensure that there was proper. Uh, road allowance. With, and through that process is when the applicants uh discovered that there was a double wide. And they made the decision to request the stop up and close to the conversations with planning, which I was. So it hasn't been approved through planning it, but planning does support it.
Uh, through you, Chair, now, so I guess. I guess I should have made a comment previous, I sorry, I apologize, I'm trying to, into the muddy as of it, um. Don't quote me on the exact year, but in the Elizabeth Town, Killy area, there was a interesting. Um, survey back in the late seventeen hundreds and along the borders, they surveyed a double wide, so along. Uh, Old Bastard, uh, South Elm, Lee, Kitley and Elizabeth Town. Or, there's one more, they actually surveyed a double wide, so we have a hundred and ten feet uh road width. Of municipal boundaries across those sections. So in this unique situation, because of the demarcation, that. Order is owned by one township. Now on the Kitley, South Elm'sley town line, we have the bridge with fair to discuss later. It's the same situation where we have, but we don't have. Uh, real lakes on the other. I, my comments are to not give all of the, I know in the past, council has approved giving all of the road allowance on one side of the road. But based on my comments, I guess. But based on my comments, I get the addition I would make to it. Is making it a fair and equitable process so that if this person gets it on this side of the road, the neighbor across the road hasn't been consulted. They might want the extra ten meters on their property. But if we give it to this person, then we can't give it to that one. And then we end up with a jagged. Right, right away instead of a nice straight line, which is kind of the way we like to live for roads. But that makes any sense.
Did, did staff say earlier that it's been done three times already?
Yes. But they, they, they gave it all to one side of the road and it's not, they split it. I'm trying to make it an equitable, so the north and the south side of the rightway. Are eligible to take advantage of this excess land that administratively has been deemed useless, which I don't ever do this, but. We could have brought a four lane highway down through there, some whatever we want.
If, if, if. In the long range, does the, the, the application for uh. A lot there, do they, do they need to make it deeper? To make the other, are, if they lose space legally, they have a little less space than they thought they did.
We own the space, they don't own the space.
No, I know, but they're a lot. They thought was there, that, so they lose a few feet. So are they gonna ask to have it extended?
Like, would be a planning question. I'm not sure with the lot size, I can't remember off the top of my head, the lot size, whether or not. It's a conforming lot without ours, or it's our portion that maybe goes to deed over to them, we'll make it a conforming lot. The downside, like I said, it's just to be inside of the safety and the geometric alignments that I referenced in my comments is to be fair. To cross the border to all the residents that, but the excess road allowance. And you're, because you're saying the press, you're continuing to set a precedence where it's first pass post, so the first person to ask for the land gets it. So is that fair? Is that equitable? I don't know. That's the question.
Any comments, Counselor Smith?
Thank you. It's just unfortunate that uh. Our planner is not, yeah. Present right now, um. Cause my, my question is, why are we uh stop up and closing this road and why could this property? Um I guess was severed. Exactly the conversation been going around the table is that, why could it not just be extended further into the light? And then that way, the road wouldn't, the roadway wouldn't have to be touched. But. Uh going through, I think there was already been. Um discussion back in. By the date again. Twenty-three, September twenty-three on this. And. Says recommendation at the very bottom of that one was that uh council preparation does as a county support. Option one being to suspend. The public road stopping up or closing procedures. Due to administrative nature. This transaction and approve the necessary bylaw to stop up both transfers. So I understand. I, I'm confused. I don't understand this one versus what was already been passed, I guess.
Okay, uh, okay, one at a time, but I, I have, I have you, Counselor Renault, in a minute.
Um thank you Chair through you to councillor Smith. Again, apologies for the confusion. That report that you're referencing is for one of the most recent similar applications to this one. To show the discussion and that council did approve it.
Great.
This, this application that is before you does have a severance. The severance is not dependent to get the stop up and closed. But the area that they're requesting is currently being used um. Whether it was con- confusion on their part that they thought it was part of their lot or not. They weren't aware that it was a double wide until they were going through the process of the severance and meeting the conditions. So they don't need the stop up and close for the severance. Uh the severance will go through without the stop up and close. They're requesting it. Uh so that they can continue to use the area that they have been using. Planning explained it to me that it was very similar to the previous. Request, which is the report you have attached as an attachment.
Thank you. Counselor Brayton, uh sorry, Renault?
Then, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So if I'm to understand this correctly. There has already been. A stop-up. On different places on this road. And they would all have to be on the south side because that's where the double wide isn't. The road is already on the north side. So it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense. To offer the north side any of it, because then you'd have to rebuild, you'd have to build a road where there isn't one now. If I'm looking at this correctly, and I'm thinking, why would we not just do the whole road? Take a few feet off it. Sell it to the landowners and widen our road or whatever we need to have it for, if we needed to widen. But just get it cleaned up. Because every time somebody wants to do something on that road, we're gonna end up right back here discussing the same thing.
Okay.
That's it, uh through your chair to councillor Renault, just to clarify, the previous uh stop-up and closes have not been consecutively on the same side of the road. And so we're gonna continue having this jagged um property fabric, lot fabric, which is problematic. So. My recommendation is that we give them half of what they're asking for and going forward, we take. If, when, and when a property comes forward and asks for the additional at their cost, or. Do you wanna try and sell? That's fine. Because we're not charging them for this in this process. They're, we're giving it to them. They're paying all the legal fees. So what I'm recommending is we give them half of that. Uh what the request is and we stick to that going forward on any of these road allowances that have the double width. So we maintain a continuity across the lot fabric throughout the campaign.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense.
Counselor Brayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh. I think that. We have severances and we've had close-ups. Stop-ups and whatever. Uh. It makes sense to me that if we ask for it and we need it, we get a. What we want, because we take it as, as, if we need it and. I don't see why we should uh alter from that now. So I, I'm with, with the. The roads manager. That, that. Give him half of it and. Grayvone. Fair as I can hear.
Counselor Downing?
So um if, if we give them half, will that reduce the amount of land that they can farm at the moment? And like for how many years have they? I know the, the youngs have been farming for a long time there and uh. You know, this wasn't even thought of until. They asked for a severance um because they probably didn't know it was a double wide road. And. They assumed that that was their property to be able to farm. So.
Albert Wright. Yeah, follow up. A hundred years ago. Hundred years ago, there, there was none of this stopping up or whatever. They were just scared enough. Like it, this, this stuff was stopping up, like it, it's common sense that. To leave, leave the road straight. If we wanna re- rebuild that road someday. We can do it. We don't have to kiss anybody's butt. But we can. Give them half or give them none, whereas I'm concerned and leave the road alone. And if they wanna, want more land, go in the back of their lot and get it from wherever they, they got this lot from. That's all I'm saying.
Good. I heard about giving them half. But is that included in this administrative in nature conclusion, or is that a different motion?
That's under. The second and that the committee provide direction to council on the options presented. And so it's under, it's under page two. Here at the top, discussion and options. The half would be under options for. But it's still administrative in nature.
Option two or three?
Option three follows the recommendation from Public Works.
Well, that doesn't speak more half though.
But it's a recommendation.
Only, only the north side be granted. Reserve the symmetry.
Uh Chair, I'll read the. Blurb at the bottom. It is recommended that only a portion of the request to stop up and close be approved specifically eleven point zero six four meters. Can be taken from the north side of the roadway. This would result in a reduced but centered roadway of thirty-one point one eight one meters. Reserving design symmetry and functionality, functional flexibility. This recommendation balances applicants' intent for municipality's responsibility to maintain a road network and safety system in line of long-term planning objectives. Now, we need twenty meters, twenty point one sixteen meters minimum for the roads, that's sixty-six feet. So that leaves this thirty-one point one, thirty-one point one eight one meters, so that if the. Resident on that or the property on the south side of the road asks for ten meters, they can take ten meters. Then this needs our right of way centered.
So where do we go? Sound good?
Sounds good to me.
I'm going to ask for the vote. That uh. We gotta put the motion, we gotta put the option on this floor for a vote, right? We have to include an option before we do the vote.
Uh, oh, at least.
Alan, sorry, Counselor Renault.
I move that we. Take option three.
I got a motion and a seconder that will accept option three. Are we gonna vote all in favor? Carrie, all in, anybody against? Record it, thank you. Now. We're gonna go back to the original motion. Is there, I'm gonna call the vote on that. Do you want me to read it over again? Which is the stop-up and close request we received and committee provide direction to council, option presented, and we did that, and then we did that.
You'll have to.
We have to.
You'll have to read it that under the, and that it now will read the council on, direction to council on option three.
Okay, and we add that to the. You want me to read that? I will try. Or we just add it to the original move, option three of that to the original move?
Yeah, we just, we amended it to say read option three.
Okay. The option three to financial uh support the recommendation of Public Works Department that only the north side of the. Right away be granted to preserve the design symmetry and functional flexibility. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Nays. Gotcha. Okay, we're gonna move on to. Option, uh number five point three. A dash twenty-five dash fifty-one livestock valuer. And that is uh. I'll read the motion. That the committee of the whole accept report A dash twenty-five dash fifty-one. Livestock valuer and that the committee of the whole recommend that council appoint Aaron Theory Alt. As livestock valuer for the township of Elizabeth. Is there a mover? Is there a seconder mover, Mayor Burrow? Uh Mayor, uh Counselor Smith. And uh it's on the floor. Any discussion? There, but any? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does every, eh, everybody or anybody know this man?
I guess their staff have met them, have heard.
Comments? That Chair, yes, um I've, um I've met Ms. Throw um probably four or five times in the last six months and. Um first of all, with her trying to go through the process of getting a valuer to, to go about to her farm. Um and then secondly, when she came back to sort of talk about being able to do uh this process and her being a valuer. Um she clearly has a strong connection to the uh, to the farm community in the area. Um and um would be uh, my opinion would be an excellent uh option for us.
You think she knows valuable? I am old enough. Yeah, I, I never heard that or so, that's like what I imagine.
Counselor Renault?
Yes, and I'm, I've spoke with her as well uh when she was having this issue and I have had other farmers call. Similar, not be able to get a hold of an evaluator. So having another one. That people can call is not a bad thing.
Another one, do we have, already have one?
Yes, but it. Go ahead.
I was just putting my finger, sorry.
Through you Chair, yes, um we have a gentleman by the name of Claire Porter, um who is um certified through the ministry. There have, uh he has had some issues with getting, or others, farmers have had some issues in getting in contact with him. Um during some parts of the year. Um but again, as Counselor Renault has said, having two valuers. Um would just be benefits to the community.
Not a bad thing. Thank you.
I'm ready.
Is there not certain qualifications for this job?
Through your chair, yes, there is. Um she's called, she has actually gone through the ministry and done all the required courses in order to.
Any more discussion? Then I'll call the vote. Pardon me?
Not about that.
Counselor Renault would like to comment again? Go ahead.
Yes, she, she is in the township as well. Whereas Claire is not in the township, but she would be in our township.
That's fair enough. I, I, I just didn't know.
And in my business, we've never had the need of a, a valuer, so I, we're fortunate that way, but uh I think we're neighbors that do need it, so. Think it's important to get this done.
Yeah, yeah.
So all in favor, calling the motion, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. It's gonna move to uh. Item five point four. Report A dash twenty-five dash fifty-two Bellamy Park Pavilion upgrades. I'll read the motion that the committee of the whole receive report A dash twenty-five dash fifty-two Bellamy Park Pavilion upgrades. And that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve the proposed upgrades and that the funds be taken from the Recreation Reserve Bellamy. Is there a mover and a seconder?
I'll just go.
Counselor Edie and Counselor Smith. Does staff have anything to add to the report that we have in front of us?
Um uh through your chair. This um, this has obviously come forward from uh Biders Park Management who um are responsible for Bellamy Park. Um they are intimately involved, obviously, in, in the facility and the pavilion is one of the facilities that. Is in need of some capital repair. Um our building department had been out, the electrical in particular is, uh it needs to be done. Um they had also noted a couple of other things, uh the roof structure, at least having a ceiling on the roof would be beneficial. It's not completely necessary, but beneficial. Um and yeah. The Leacy has also um mentioned that there's a several uh landscape items that need to be or would be done. Um they have done some landscaping outside the back of the pavilion by the washers and put in um. Patio surface, um but there is still some water damage that's coming from the landscaping and so doing some landscaping both around that and by the road. Um would be useful to ensure that they are protecting that facility going forward. And um most of the buyers is here. If uh you have any questions specifically, I'm sure you'd be more than happy to answer them.
Counselor Smith, through your chair to our Director of Finance. Uh Counselor Downing sent a question, our Director of Finance today and um. We would have to open up our email or whatever to get that information, but can you clarify first of all, why? I recall that uh our, our payment for the facility was already paid off. You guys have a question?
Okay, uh through you to Counselor Smith. Yes, it was paid in twenty twenty-four. We finished the loan from our own reserve. We finished paying back to working capital. The last payment was eleven thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. So this year's ten thousand that was budgeted will go to. The reserve.
Yeah. And uh and since I don't have a copy of the, the lease agreement. What was the dollar amount that uh was provided? What was the dollar amount that, uh, was for Byers, Byers management is to put back into a park every year?
I don't have. The lead heap as we collect rent, that's the only number I have.
Um, through you, Chair.
Yes.
So the, the lease agreement is simply that he pays his lease, um, uh, his rent agreement is that. We are responsible for putting ten thousand dollars into a reserve fund for possible capital improvements hopefully. So it's our contribution to the reserve that I actually is there to help fund any capital that you need to be done. And that comes from the rental, the rent payment that he gets.
Okay. And so right now. Um. Find out figure. Uh, we're looking at, oh, I was. There's what, twenty nine thousand in the Bellamy Park line item?
In that reason.
Totally. And projected costs are twenty, twenty two, seventy twenty two thousand five hundred, drop, drop it over. So basically completing that line item.
What, ten more going in this year?
That includes.
That includes the ten. Did I ask the question? Like, yeah, I, cause I'm not as familiar with the lease, cause that was before, I mean, does the, the, the. These are also invest a portion of cap, in capital or only? The township? Like, is there?
Uh, through you, Chair, and to yourself, um, the agreement doesn't, um, oblige Leacy to, uh, make any capital improvements, that's our part, it's our. Um, our responsibility to do any capital improvements, having said that. For example, the patio at the back of those, uh, those properties, um, they took on themselves and they did that improvements, um, without coming to council, without asking for any funding for it.
Just one second, uh, if I could add one more comment. I took the liberty the other day to drive around the township, and I did take the liberty to visit the park. There, there was nobody there, and I didn't phone, sir, sorry, but I did fly through. It wasn't, it wasn't spot. Pardon me?
Pay your fee to get through.
I was busy, nice quiet, they didn't, they needed a quiet hour, but. I will say I was impressed with the park compared to when I drove through there three years ago. I will say, I, I, I looked at things, I'm not an inspector by any means, I'm just a counselor, and I, but, um. I think the place looks better today than it did, so. I'll leave it at that. Yes.
I thought that. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I thought that the lease, he was. What was, what was that, he was to. Put so much money back into the park each year, is, is that right? For myself? It was, yeah. You're right?
No, no.
No, no. Well, anyway, I still wanna go on.
You want, you have to wait a minute, let's go.
I'm on take two. I like that proposal, there's nothing wrong with it, but, uh. Think, couple of things. Uh, back in the day when, when we built that thing, Counselor John Johnson, myself. We wanted to put that, where you see them, uh. Roof trusses. We, we wanted to put steel up there. And we got voted, and this, this was when we were building the place. We wanted, said we'll finish it, put, we'll put steel up there, white, green, pink, whatever color you want. For eighteen hundred dollars. That's what was going to cost us trap up and put steel, uh, inside building grade steel in it. And they didn't wanna do that, cause that was gonna put their price up a little more than what they wanted to do. And I think they've kicked themselves every year since then for the birds flying up there and mosquitoes and whatever. I heard it mentioned that when we were still operating that there, that we should put plywood up there and stain it or put varnish or something on it. And I was, again, that I would, I would today. Recommend. That they put steel on it or at least get prices for steel and, uh, as get away from this varnish, and it's there be. If you don't know, it would be there for a lifetime. Then it would be maintenance free. And look good. Get it. Thank you.
There a little bit of, I told you someone there too? Just a little?
Eighteen dollars now. Yes, it does.
Okay, I will take it that the discussion is complete, I'm sorry, and, uh, Mr. Downey.
The, um. The work that needs to be done there, I, I, I agree with it, but again, this, this was never discussed in any budget talks. Um, I think it's a little bit, it would be more appropriate to have this work done in the spring. When it is part of the discussion, and secondly. I don't think ten thousand dollars a year, um. Cuts it, because, uh, there's probably other things that, you know, at one time. When Counselor Renault was on the, uh, the committee, they used to try and do electrical upgrades. Small electrical upgrades to poles, to, um. Outlets once a year, and, uh. I, I don't know when the last time was that that was done, but. I think I would have maybe, um, tried to get, because fifteen thousand dollars of the lease goes to insurance. It leaves ten thousand upkeep this place, I don't think that's enough. So. I don't agree with doing it now. And I, I would like to see more set aside to keep the facility up to date in the future.
Um, through you, uh, Chair, go ahead. So the lease payments are twenty five thousand dollars a year, fifteen thousand is put to insurance, ten thousand is put to capital improvements. To increase it above the ten thousand. There's no revenue coming in for that, unless you're gonna take the tax on it. And the, the current, um, request is being funded through a reserve, which has been set specifically for capital improvements to the Bellamy Park. So there is funding there, um, it's not going on the, the taxpayer, it's a reserve that's been allocated for capital improvements of the park, and there is funding there.
Oh, yeah, Council Renault.
Yes, um, I, I would agree with, um. Our C A O. It is coming out of reserves. It is quieter at this time of the year as the park is closing shortly. To do this work, to try and do this work in the spring when the weather is maybe not the best. And the park is busy trying to get ready to be opened. And then the campers all come in. It's a nightmare trying to do stuff in the spring, it always is. Cause it's such a busy time, but right now that work can be done, and there probably wouldn't be anybody around all week to know you're doing it, even if it is open. So it's much better idea to do this kind of stuff in the. Fall than in the spring, it is coming out of reserves. I, I'm not sure if Council Brayton is right, that it should be metal or it should be wood, I don't know. And that's, that's a question for a contractor.
I've been Mayor Burrow, just a puff.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, uh, I think, uh, what's coming home to roost now is the, is the difficulty of the starting line. Uh, the, uh, the buyer's management is presented with in terms of the camper fees and, and the structure. For some time that the park struggled to, to make ends meet, and, and I know, you know, the board did its best to try and get that work done, but, but it was always a, a financial struggle. Um, yes, this is a, a reserve fund, uh, but I think, you know, you know that. There's gonna be another ten thousand going, and then another ten thousand the following year and so on, so this is not like an emergency meeting. This is, this is more like a layaway plan, and I've always struggled with, with the fact that we use the term reserve for a number of different types of accounts. We use that, that term consistently, even though some, some are reserve funds, some are really layaway accounts, and, you know, I'd, I'd like to see us move to a different terminology so that we don't. We don't think incorrectly, that's, that's my opinion, um. But, but I think, I think the fundamentally, the framework is, is working. If, if we want to see more aggressive, uh, plans in, in the park, then we need to be prepared to help. Buyers management, uh, communicate to the, to the campers that, that. We are gonna be responsible for a two hundred dollar a year increase or whatever it is, because when all said and done. Traditionally, and I credit the former board with this as well, the concept has always been, this can't be a burden on the taxpayers, the park has to, has to pay for itself. And so it is doing that right now, and it's doing that at a rate that it can afford, given that financial starting line and how low the fees were, and, you know. I, I share your comments, that, that the park looks very different today than what it, what it did two or three or four years ago, uh, for, for sure, so. Yes, we'll be drawing down the, the, what I'm gonna call the layaway fund. Uh, with the expectation that it's gonna get topped up again, and if we wanna have a conversation to look to the future, and have Mr. Byers and, and his wife come in and, and talk about, okay, how do we work? Together on a communication plan, so that the, the campers understand why the fees are going up again, well, fair enough, I don't think that's a discussion for today, you know. I will say, uh, on the, on the metal versus the, the wood ceiling, I note that in our shade pavilions that we just recently did, uh, for the, for the other ballparks. They were, uh, plywood, same ceilings that were put in, so I don't know whether that's a fad or there's a particular construction reason for that. Um, but intuitively, I would lean more to, towards, uh, steel for the, for the longevity, but I do know, uh, it's not out of place, apparently, we've done it ourselves to, to go with a wooden ceiling and other pavilions, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll leave that there.
Council Brayton, then.
Well, thank you. We're, uh. We're, uh. This committee is making a recommendation to the council. And, uh, that'll be coming up next week, I guess. So, today I make the motion. That, or maybe.
Well, we probably have motion on the floor, but.
Show of hands or whatever. Uh. That we get a price in on steel, at least. I know. I know that. They're recommended wood. But we, as council, as township, still owns a building, their, their park or whatever. So I, at least I would like to see. Uh, the price of. I think it's sixty four hundred dollars for this plywood, I would like to see if, uh. A price for the steel, cause I know it'll last longer and, uh, no maintenance. Before we bolt on up and council it.
I, I, I will allow a comment from the gallery.
That would also probably have to be, we'll probably have to reexamine the electrical costs too. How they run the electrical and lights and switches would be affected by splitting metal.
And something by.
About putting steel up.
Yeah.
Or system. And.
Is that possible?
It's possible, the, the timings, electricians are really hard to get hold of.
Well, that, that's any time. I got two grandsons, I'll send you one.
They're electricians.
Okay. Where are you talking? Council Brady would like to comment?
Oh, I was just gonna say it's the cost, it's gonna be like probably triple.
What's that?
Steel to wood now, at least.
What would be the cheapest?
But it would be nice to see a price for it anyway.
What would be the cheapest?
I would.
I don't think so, maybe, maybe would, I would.
One more.
So this is going in the ceiling, inside where. Multiple events happen, bands, the bingo-ish type games, and. Lots of people. Tin and metal is going to just vibrate that noise, where you want a dampening wood. For people under this, in this building.
Yes, this is, this is inside, it's a ceiling, this is, it's not the roof on the outside.
I know that, I know that, but I don't carry a, or a piece plywood, plastic up there you wanna.
Okay. We've had a pretty good discussion, I think, we have a motion on the floor. And, uh, I'm gonna ask for both, all in favor?
Can you reread the motion?
Yeah, it's on your, uh, document there, that the committee of the whole receive report A twenty five fifty two Bellamy Park Pavilion upgrades. And that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve the proposed upgrades, and that the funds be taken from the Recreation Reserve Bellamy.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we hadn't changed any of all the discussion.
When I called for the vote, I didn't see, I didn't look up to see your vote. But we're okay, we had a majority, there you go, thank you. We're going to move to item five point five in our agenda. When it come, uh, with the, it was on Kitlee Water Systems. The motion. Is that the committee of the whole receive staff report A dash twenty five dash fifty three Township of Glisong Kitlee Water System. And that the committee of the whole recommend that council direct staff to bring back a report identifying an area rating charge. To apply to users of the township water system and wastewater users to be applied in the twenty twenty six budget. Is there a mover for this? Council Eady, the seconder, Mayor Burrow. And thank you, now we have those on the floor, staff like to add anything to the information we received?
Um, through you, Chair, um, this was an interesting report to write, simply because, um, there is obviously, uh. A relationship with the city of Brockville that we have to sort of. They're managing the system on our behalf, and so, uh, while we get sort of, uh, regular reports, it was important to sort of get a really up to date. Capital report for the next ten years, um, so that, um, and I think this came out of the. Uh, cabinet repairs that were being requested, some funding, uh, in the springtime. Um, so it's important for council to understand that over the next ten years, the city is, is estimating that there's gonna be a hundred and forty four thousand dollars in. Capital repairs, which will be needed to be made to the water system that we owned. Um, and we need to fund that somewhere. Um, and, um, the. The actual amount, uh, what we're suggesting is that staff come back to with a report that details what we think that actual amount will be. Um, I would, would, um. Suggest that, um. While this is talking about the next ten years. Council needs to think about the next fifteen years, when that system is going to be, when the entire. System is going to need to be replaced. Created, something's going to need to happen to them, happen to it, and how are you going to fund that? So this is just for the short term, the ten years, but there's also a bigger picture, bigger bus down the road, uh, what are we gonna do when the system comes to its end of its useful life?
Very important, yep. Any questions, Council Renault, please go ahead.
Yeah, should we be looking at this, okay, yes, what they've got here, I don't know how much, a hundred and forty four, how many? How much you would have to, to increase the rate pairs just to get to that number? But should we be looking at, you said fifty years, at a increase every year, so that it's not a sticker shock? Cause I'm afraid that this one's gonna be a sticker shock, this first one, this hundred and forty four thousand over the next ten years. But should we not be doing it every year? Cause I don't think we've been doing that in the past, increasing it annually or even. Increasing it period.
Okay, we have a comment from Director of Finance.
So. In the twenty twenty two asset management. Plan that council approved, and. I guess I'll take some responsibility for not bringing it forward and. Uh, encouraging council to have the discussion about increasing those rates. Because in forty six years, that water main's useful life will have been used up. Estimated, right? And in the plan, uh. Citywide, yes, the citywide that did the plan for us suggested that ninety eight thousand dollars a year was the. Amount we needed to be targeting every year to. Put in reserve or use as the case may be, um. And that would have been three hundred and fifty dollars per user. And. So, you know, that's a, that's a significant touch, it's twenty five dollars on a monthly bill. I believe that's what should, we should be doing, it's not gonna take us to the finish line, because of course the price of everything, and forty years down the road, if you add two percent per year. It's not gonna cost. What it was gonna cost then, but. We have to start somewhere. And the hundred and forty three, to answer the question, the hundred and forty three thousand on the ten year plan is peanuts. Uh, it amounts to four dollars and thirty cents a month per user, we have approximately two hundred and eighty users. Uh, it amounts to four dollars and thirty cents a month per user. We have approximately two hundred and eighty users. Um. So to put four hundred, four dollars and thirty cents a month on. No problem. We got the next ten years covered. It's the net, it's the the forty year mark. And while we may not be able to increase the users, which equates to now about six hundred and. Eighty thousand, including the ten year, the ten year uh plan is mostly life cycle maintenance. It's capital that has to be done to continue the life, extend the life of the equipment. At the end of the day, the replacement cost for that water main is seven million dollars. Right? Forty years down the road is gonna be significantly more. And probably in forty years. We're gonna have to borrow. The problem is. It's the gap that needs to be enough. If we had been putting. Twenty five dollars away the moment that. Line was put in and charging twenty five dollars, hindsight's always twenty twenty. For the last twenty five years, we'd be in a better position, but now we have a gap. That we have to catch up on. So. I mean, doing something and something. Palatable. For everybody. At least you've got something and you won't have to borrow. Or whoever is here forty years down the road, won't have to borrow the full amount. There'll be something there. And. You know, and maybe they'll be smart enough to start putting money away as soon as it's replacing, and I don't know. Um, but this will all come forward and and still work. I. I wanted to have the asset revised asset management plan, but this is all part of the figuring. The the original one only had so much information. I'm trying to get better information to have a better asset management plan. For council uh. This month sometime. It won't be on the next agenda because I still don't have all the information I need to. Be comfortable that I'm giving you something. Useful. To prepare. So for Charles, to to prepare multi-year budgets and and so on and so forth, and have something. That is usable. We we our data will always need to be refined. And I will have it closer, uh but it's never never perfect. Um, so anyway, that's a precursor to what's coming. While we're considering this hundred and this, and I have built the plan that Brockville sent me. I've built that into life cycle maintenance, so that'll be stuff you have to spend. But ultimately, we still need to be putting money away to re- replace at the very end of end of life, so. Uh, we're gonna have some discussions on what's palatable.
Counsel Smith.
Through you, Chair, to Director of Finance. So. If I can get this straight. For an example, like you said, if you if you put another twenty five dollars on top of the monthly bill. That monthly bill comes from who? The city of Rockville? Okay. Because. It shouldn't be the rest of the taxpayers. So that that was my, that's number one. So. It'd be a decision made by council here. To forward to the city of Rockville to say we want you to put additional.
A capital.
Improvement.
Improvement fund.
On that bill. Okay, thank you.
And then they would forward that us to have a reserve. And I think your presentation was well done. I mean, it's it's a no brainer. We have to. We just can't leave it for the. Individuals involved thirty, forty years from now. But let's get started. But we have a current decision to make tonight. That's. That's gonna happen in another meeting. So uh we have an uh motion on the floor. Is a discussion called for this uh issue? Then I'm gonna ask for a vote. Uh, all in favor? Carrie. Thank you. We will move on to five point five and then five point six. Good night. Uh, sale of uh. Surplus vehicle for uh. I will read the motion. The the report P W dash twenty five dash twenty nine be received. And that the committee of the whole recommends to council that the surplus vehicle be offered to the highest bidder. Of the auction be held on govdeals.ca. Is there a mover? A seconder? Counsel E D is a mover? A seconder? Counsel uh Downey? Thank you. Is there anything that staff would like to add? It was all pretty clear in the presentation that we have. Yes, thank you. Is there any questions from counselors tonight? On that topic, Counsel Downey?
So the. At the last meeting, uh. Public Works was given the go ahead for a budget override of three hundred and eighty thousand. And I thought in lieu of not being able to get the truck this year. Um. They were gonna outfit this second vehicle. So. Were you able to get the truck or not till next year?
Uh Chair, through the Chair of you, Counsel Danny. So we met with the uh supplier and they're aiming for mid-December with no hiccups. But so best case scenario, we'll have mid-December and we pray for no snow. So we do need to outfit truckal CO six, which is. It contained a report, report asking for the funds be of that from the sales truck CO nine to be implied to opening CO six to backstop us. Um, in the short term. And we're also, there will be a report coming forward. Shortly, and we don't want to give a timeframe, but um. We are having, we're in process of reviewing the power routes now to cover um. The stopgap and and cover the routes. Over the short term of the winter until we get the opening truck. And. We're praying for notes now until January.
So if we get the truck mid-December, then um is there any way to negotiate the? And put the payment into twenty twenty six? So that it wouldn't um. Basically, it was on the docket for twenty twenty six. We're gonna try. Council decided, not with my help. To put it um into twenty twenty five. If we were to push that invoice into twenty twenty six. Uh, that would leave us with um, you know. Sticking pretty close to the budget. Is that possible? Because it's only two weeks difference between fifteenth of December and end of the year.
Through you, Chair, to Counsel Danny.
Yeah.
No, I. My recommendation is to push the cut the uh supplier to get it to as soon as possible. Um, I didn't. Ask for permission for this, and I didn't mention it to the supplier, but I would bonus them if they could get it to me in the middle of November, so that would save me a lot of work. Um, traditionally, we've received a lot of snow between the two last, in the last two weeks of December, over the Christmas and January holiday. Um, finance director can speak to the overtime charges that we had through those periods, so. We will be the truck or a truck um. Again, we're gonna do our best to cover uh the power routes by reconfiguring how we're gonna manage the vehicles, the assets we have, and opening trucks or set trucks CO six. Um, is gonna allow us to be able to. Cover that.
Counsel Downey?
Um, as a follow up, well, how do we get ourselves into these um predicaments? Uh, you know, like, really, it's. We should have known that this truck was gonna be screwed up before the end of the year. I think. It it's it's, you know, how? How does that happen that you can't have the vehicle maintained properly? To get us through to when we were supposed to replace it?
Uh, through you, Chair, Counsel Danny. Um, well, I would really like to see your crystal ball so that I could buy a Powerball ticket and get the six hundred million billion dollar lottery ticket. Um. The the vehicles are uh. Uh inspected annually. Um, the guys do their sort of checks and they go through the uh regular process of maintaining, doing a regular routine maintenance. Uh, truck Q nine was a complete system failure for the emissions control system. Um. With the new depth that's in the emissions controls that we have on the vehicles, they're problematic. Um, we spoke to different uh different municipalities that had similar trucks like this. And they've encountered the same problem. It's just at some point. Now, I did. On as a sidebar, had a conversation with another asset where right now the vehicle is in really good shape. However. The engine was a design flaw by manufacturer, and it's one of those things that you can drive down the road and the head gets a little bit low. Uh, and so we had that conversation today. It looks and appears to be ready, things running fine, but it's one of the things you won't know because it's an internal component. And then it just goes when it goes.
Okay. Thank you for both explanations. I see the discussion is closing here. We have a motion on the floor. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor to uh support this motion? Against? Carrie. Thank you. We'll move on to five point seven. Uh, report from the Kitlee South Elley Bridge Replacement Tender Results. I'll read the motion. That report P W dash twenty five dash thirty be received. And that the committee of the whole recommends to council to enter into an agreement with the township of Rita Lakes and Goldley Moore Limited. For a replacement of the town line bridge at fifty percent of the total tender cost being two hundred and forty five thousand. Uh, but uh two hundred and forty five thousand five hundred dollars plus the township's portion of the H S T or total of two hundred and forty nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents. And that the committee of the whole recommend to council to enter into a project management agreement with T S I Inc. Engineering firm for project management as presented by in this report. With an offset limit of fifty thousand six hundred dollars exclusive non-refundable H S T. I'd like to have a mover and a seconder for this motion. Mover, Counsel Brayton, Counsel E D. The staff have anything to add to this report? The information was before us and uh. Interesting variety of bids. It's just incredible.
Counsel Smith, the question is through from you to our Director of Public Works and your public works. So were you, uh, Mr. Matt, are you involved in? Uh, looking over these tenders as well?
Yeah, uh Chair through you to uh Counsel Smith. Uh, Rita Lakes administered the uh the tendering process. Uh, the results were in the visitor's chair, may have viewed them, and we also uh asked the consulting firm to go through them as well, and they based on the. Myself, the manager, uh Public Works for Rita Lakes and the design consultant. All found that uh Goldley North bid was.
Wow, well, the only reason I ask is when I'm looking at the dog on a sense. And say to myself, okay, is there something happening here we don't know about? Um. But you know, we're lying. We're not gonna have a contractor here that's already doing one of our bridges now and. Um. Knowing a couple of the other ones, but anyways, if as long as everybody's. Tees are crossed, the eyes are dotted, and lots of ice has been on it. I'm okay with it. Uh, just don't come back with more money.
Okay. Counsel Brayton?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought maybe I'd win the bridge business. I might make a half million bucks like that.
Who's making a half million?
Four hundred and sixty nine to one three.
There you go. But those people didn't get the job.
No, but they know, they might have.
Well, we have uh some staff members that decided not.
And that's right. That's right.
Yeah.
That's why we paid the big price to get the big man.
All right, we have a discussion that's included. And we have some good information. And. Motion is on the floor. Anybody want me to read it again, or we're okay? We're okay? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much for that. We're now into the correspondence section, six, six point one. Persons with Fall District Hospital uh annual report. And six point two, a parade invitation. Is there any comments or questions? Then we'll motion to file. Receive most maybe uh received. Is there a motion to receive these uh correspond items? I got what we're uh. I'm looking at my instruction. I missed my instructions here already. Uh, read the correspondence through the theme file. Uh. Was it? Usually, Ali, what would you uh Counsel Noel, what would you like?
Are we gonna put a float into the parade for Spencerville Fair? They've asked if we want to.
Right, late, you don't even afford it.
We have.
You're not even holding help, help do the work.
Well, that's true.
Let's go.
I'm just asking.
I guess. I sense it on the crowd here. No.
Are all of us going to go and be in the parade?
Well, somewhere active, right? Yeah, like my kids.
It's a. I would assume that this is an individual response situation, so if you're there, have a good day. I think you will. Because it's a it's a great event, but if you're not, I'm sure you're busy and being productive somewhere else. Counsel, I'm there.
Uh, so uh through you, Mr. Chair, um and I I'll gladly volunteer to to do this. The invitation came uh through me. Um, I think we need to provide them with some feedback, but you know, w- we might be eager to to participate. You know, it's a big regional uh event. But we need a little bit more notice, right? Both both individually and as a corporation, if they want us participating in in their parade, you know, yeah, a few months, right? Few days would probably be more appropriate, and then they would much. It'd be a much better chance they'd actually see us. So I I unfortunately, you know, can't make it. Uh, otherwise, I I would be happy to to go on the parade, but I just, I can't change my my schedule at this time.
So then uh we're going to ask staff to uh make a response to with that type of information?
We we can do, or we can just receive and file, and I'll go ahead and and just provide some friendly feedback to them.
Okay. And I'd like to have a motion to receive and file these documents. Counsel Smith, Counsel Brayton, thank you. We will move to number seven, public question.
You got the longer and seconder, but you have to follow for the votes, please.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Thank you.
I asked her to keep me in line, so she's doing a good job. It's okay. We're working together here. Um, public question period, number seven. Are there any? Written comments presented?
None received.
And none in the gallery at this point?
Nope.
Then we will move on to uh. A closed session. Are we going to adjourn this meeting or? I should read my notes. It closed me. Note that the committee will be entering into a closed meeting or council. And that the streaming of the meeting will be stopped, although the committee will enter back. Into an open session to adjourn and report out live stream, will not return.
So I have a a question important order, Mr. Chair, if I may. Uh, considering some of the items that are going to be discussed and and some timelines associated with those. The committee can only make recommendations to council as a as a body. If we anticipate that because of of timelines. We want to actually provide direction to to staff, that's something that only council should do. And uh so the C A O and I have gone back and forth. With your indulgence, if you wish to adjourn the committee meeting, we're perfectly comfortable in now. Turning the closed items into a closed council session, so that we have that flexibility to actually provide counter direction on the same night. If that suits your.
That sounds like it's the right thing to do at this stage. For timeliness. Timeliness is everything and to to be.
Yeah.
To achieve what we want to achieve.
Yeah.
So then uh I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting. At this point. Counsel E D? All in favor?
Bye, everybody.
Hey, Ali.
Take care. At that point, then I will add air to assume the chair since this is now council meeting.
Yep.
After.